A little bit different.
Call the Oatana City Council meeting to order for Tuesday, October 21st. You have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Rainey.
Here.
Svenby.
Here.
Dodson.
Here.
Thompson.
Here.
Schultz.
Here.
Burbank.
Here.
Abraham.
Here.
Mayor Kuntz.
Here.
We have all seven of the council and the mayor present.
Thank you. Please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and I'd like to welcome everyone here tonight. We do have one revision to the agenda, which is moving 3.52 down to 3.61. With that change, Chair will entertain a motion for approval.
Motion to approve?
Motion by Bill Thompson to approve. Do we have a second to that?
Second.
Second by Greg Schultz. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved. We'll now move on to the mayor, and we've got a busy mayor tonight. We start out with a proclamation for Zamboni Day.
It was very, very nice. They had their celebration this Saturday, and the proclamation reads, "Whereas Edith and Jean Zamboni will be celebrating their 90th birthday on October 21st. And whereas Edith and Jean were born on 121 East University and currently reside in the house they were born in. Whereas in 1944, both enrolled in Winona State Teachers College. After graduation, Jean taught art in public schools in southern Minnesota, and Edith entered into the convent of Rochester Sisters of St. Francis and taught a wide variety of subjects in Catholic high schools in Rochester, Austin, and Winona. And whereas," this is where the part gets difficult, "in 1962, Sister Edith, then known as Sister Balon, was chosen to go to Batoga, Colombia, and Jean volunteered to teach at the College of St. Franciscus in Rwanda for a year. And whereas, Jean and Edith are very active in Oatana community and are known and loved by many. Now therefore, I, Thomas A. Kuntz, mayor of the great city of Oatana, hereby proclaim October 21st, 2014, as Edith and Jean Zamboni Day, and encourage all citizens of Oatana to help celebrate Edith and Jean's 90th birthday celebration."
Thank you. And I think if you look at the two, you don't think that they're 90 years old. They're just as active as can be. That will move on to the next one, the proclamation for firefighter of the year.
The Exchange Club always has the recognition of the firefighter of the year, which will be this Thursday, and the proclamation reads, "Whereas Todd Awrick has been selected by his peers as the 2014 firefighter of the year. And whereas Todd is a lifelong resident of Oatana, joining the Oatana Fire Department as a sleeper on March 1st, 1982, and went to part-time on September 1st, 1985, and now holds the position of full-time fire equipment operator, which Todd was appointed to on February 11th, 2001. And whereas Todd is treasurer of the Oatana Fire Department, the Oatana Fighters Relief Association, served on the committee of aerial ladder pumper truck and the new rescue pumper, and has been on the committees hosting the Minnesota State Fire Department conferences, and when needed fills the position of acting fire commander. And whereas Todd finds time to relax by playing golf, snowmobiling, traveling, and most important, spending time with his wife and children. Now therefore, I, Thomas A. Kuntz, mayor of the great city of Oatana, hereby proclaim Thursday, October 23rd, 2014, as Todd Awrick Day, and call upon all citizens of the great city of Oatana to help us celebrate with Todd, as we recognize Todd as firefighter of the year."
We've got one more to go, and that's Red Ribbon Week.
Thank you, Les. Proclamation reads, "City of Oatana, whereas October 27th through October 31st is Red Ribbon Week. And whereas, Red Ribbon Week is a time for gratitude for all the lives that remain drug-free. And whereas, Red Ribbon Week is a time to pledge to live a safe and drug-free life. And whereas, Red Ribbon Week is a time to remember those we have lost in the fight against drugs. And whereas, substance abuse is particularly damaging to one of our most valuable resources, our children, and a contributing factor in the three leading causes of death of teenagers, accidents, homicides, and suicides. And whereas, it is our goal of the city of Oatana to involve families, schools, businesses, churches, law enforcement agencies, and service organizations in all aspects of this campaign, and establish an atmosphere that supports awareness, education, and ongoing initiatives to prevent illegal drug use. Now therefore, I, Thomas A. Kuntz, mayor of the city of Oatana, hereby proclaim the week of October 27th, 2014, as Red Ribbon Week."
Thank you. Now, moving on to the next one, which is the resignation.
And before I do that, just to add to the proclamations, there was something else that was celebrated this Saturday, and Les' retirement from the Service Association. So congratulations on, how many years of service?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five years of service, so congratulations on that.
Thank you.
And on the Human Rights Commission, Ron Wilson, which was a member of our Human Rights Commission, was called back in to the Lord's service to do some work down in Iowa, so he had to resign. So I asked the city council to accept the resignation of Ron Wilson on our Human Rights Commission.
Thank you. And I think we need to have a motion to accept that.
We'll do a motion to accept that.
Yes.
Motion to accept.
We have a motion by Bill Thompson to accept their resignation. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Greg Schultz. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved. Now we have a recommendation for appointment.
We are fortunate enough that John Ward volunteered to come on the Human Rights Commission. I think he will be a great asset to us, and I ask for the city council's approval of his acceptance, and then we can do the oath of office.
Thank you. What is the council's wishes on this one?
Motion.
A motion by Nate Dodson to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Brent Svenby. Any further discussion here? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved. Please.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye?
Aye.
John Ward?
John Ward.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the state of Minnesota?
The Constitution of the state of Minnesota.
The laws of the city of Oatana?
The laws of the city of Oatana.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties?
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties.
Of the office of Human Rights Commissioner?
Of the office of Human Rights Commissioner.
Of the city of Oatana?
Of the city of Oatana.
To which I have been appointed?
To which I have been appointed.
To the best of my knowledge and ability, so help me God.
To the best of my knowledge and ability, so help me God.
John, thank you very, very much. Appreciate your volunteering to do that. Yes.
Thank you, John, and appreciate the service. With that, we will move on to a public hearing to consider proposed assessments for these projects, and with that, we'll go to Kyle.
Good evening. There's quite a number of projects being assessed, and you have the roll in front of you to give you a rundown. There's Mackinac Street from Lincoln Avenue to Truman Avenue. This was a holdover from the 2013 utility and street project. The 2013 school street project from Cedar to Oak. The 2014 street and utility project, which included Meadow Lane, Linwood, Mound, Hilltop, and 16th Street Northeast. Various sidewalk repairs throughout town, and a retaining wall repair at 304 LeMond Road. The total amount proposed to be assessed is $288,766.98, and those properties, as I mentioned, are detailed on the attached. Finance Director Moan has recommended setting the interest rate at 3.5%, which is approximately 2% higher than the city's current bonding rate. And we recommend approval of these three resolutions, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. And with that, at 7:11, we will open the public hearing for comment from the public. If you wish to speak, please come up to the microphone and sign in, and then express your voice or voice your opinion on this.
I'm Joe Donkers. I am on the street assessment that you did not mention, 16th, from Bigelow to Hemlock. Little disappointed on it. Number one is that I don't really think the street needed to be totally redone. I understand that the sewer did because it was an old clay tile sewer, but when I built my house on that corner, I had to take my services off of Bigelow because there was no record of anything on Hemlock for services. So when we built, put in the garage, or the, excuse me, the garage apron, we found the services off of 16th Street. So I had to pay to have the services on 16th Street capped, and now I'm paying to have new services put on 16th within 10 years later. That's my first complaint. I don't know if we can do anything about it, but that's, I just wanted to be heard. Secondly, is that the letter went out on the 9th of February last spring, and the city council talked about it on the 25th, and I'm in Arizona, and that does not leave sufficient time, in my opinion, to make contact and have my wishes known on the project.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Any question or comment on that, Chris? As far as the timing for in the spring?
Obviously, we did follow the guidelines that are set forth by the state statutes.
Well, I'm not saying they didn't.
Yeah.
I'm just saying that that's not sufficient time.
You didn't get enough time to react to it.
Correct.
Okay.
Plus, I have to pay for an assessment on something that doesn't do me any good except 50 feet of street.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
Les.
I'm sorry. Kyle.
The sanitary sewer is not assessed, but...
And the water was not assessed.
But the street costs are.
And the street costs are assessed, and to me, the street did not have to be redone. The reason the street had to be redone was because of the sanitary sewer, the water, and the, so I'm paying for that indirectly, or directly, really, because it's a near $5,000 assessment for 93 feet.
Okay. Understood.
I don't know what the rest of the thing is. That's what I have to pay.
Okay. Thank you. Next.
I'm Eric Madison. I live at 1554 Hemlock, and as long as Mr. Donkers addressing you on the 16th Street project, that's what I'm here for, too. And I'm here and I'm ready to be heard if it's the council's wishes with respect to my assessment. If you look at page two of your packets on the assessment roll, you'll see the, about halfway down the page there, you'll see the 16th Street four parcels that are assessed there, and you can see where I'm at. And I have, I just wanted to get up and speak just briefly, just to let you know that I'm here, inasmuch as I have already sent a letter to the clerk and to the chair and to my councilman to, again, I don't necessarily intend to take more time than that unless it is, in fact, the council's intention to consider the adoption of that. I'd like to be heard. It's my understanding that perhaps there might be some consideration given to a journey, at least to that part, and if that's the case, I won't take any more time. So I'll sit down, and if you want me to get up and speak again, I sure will, but I wanted to let you know I'm here tonight, and I am prepared to be heard. And, but I have no objection, and I have no problem with continuing to discuss this with staff and council and council members between now and another adjourned session. So I'll sit down, having said that, but I want to let you know I was here tonight.
Okay. Thank you. Have any comments on that, Kyle?
Once you wrap up the hearing.
Pardon?
At the end.
At the end. Okay. Okay. Anyone else wish to speak? Anyone else wish to speak? Anyone else wish to speak? Seeing none, we'll have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
A motion by Nate to close the public hearing. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by three. Greg?
Pick one.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Public meeting is closed. Now it is questions from the council. What is, comments or questions from the council?
I have a question.
Yes.
Regarding Mackinac, I know it's carried over from a year ago. There's a lot of significant problems there. If those been corrected, or is this something we need to watch in the future?
We'll be keeping an eye on it. We've had other streets in that area with some problems. We did come in and we, part of the reason for postponing the final lift on that was to allow for any settlement, and we did end up having some. So they skimcoated those areas, and then we put the final lift on, but we are monitoring it. We do have a three-year warranty on that street, so.
Any other ones?
What do we do with Mr. Mattson's letter as far as his assessments? Staff is recommending that you close the public hearing on all those that you didn't receive contest from, and that you continue the public hearing for those that you did, Mr. Mattson, until December 2nd.
Okay, so we can, we will pull those from these motions. We've closed the public hearing already.
Correct. And now we can get together with Mr. Mattson and...
Now the motions would be...
And Mr. Donkers also.
To, in this case, 1.5, .11...
I have a question.
Yes.
Just those two, or do we want to pull the whole 16th Street project to look at?
Just those two. Just those two.
Okay.
Okay, so we would pull those two from that, so when we do make a motion on this, we would need to pull those from that motion?
Correct.
Okay. And we do have the public hearing closed. Any other comments from the council? Questions? Chair will look for a motion for 1.5.1, which is the resolution 69-14 on the streets. What is the council's wishes?
I'll make a motion to approve the assessments minus the assessments for 1554 Hemlock Avenue and 1920 16th Street Northeast.
Not later than December 2nd. For those two.
Correct.
Okay. So we have a motion to approve with those exceptions and have those heard on December 2nd. We got a motion by Brent Svenby. Do we have a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Nate Burbank. Any further discussion on this? Seeing none, all those in favor? Greg? I'm sorry.
I think we need to discuss the term, years, and the interest rate.
That's correct. That was left blank on this, and one of the things that was recommended was the interest rate being 3.5. What we need to decide is the years, the number of years that it's...
Historically, we've done 10 years, and I think we should do that, and we've previously talked about 2% over a bond rate, which would be 3.5%.
Which would be 3.5, yes. Yes, that is correct. And that needs to be part of that motion, so. Do you want to add that to the motion?
For Mr. Schultz.
Pardon?
Motion amended for Mr. Schultz. It's 10 years and 3.5%.
3.5. Okay. Thank you. And, let's see, who did we have? Dave, you accept the amendment?
Yes.
Okay. We do have an amendment to the motion, which includes the timeframe and the interest rate. With that, any other questions or comments from the council?
Yes. Good to get it.
Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved with those exceptions and the interest rate and timeframe of 10 years and 3.5%. Next one is Resolution 70-14, sidewalk repairs, which are also listed in the public hearing. What is the council's wishes here? Or questions from the council?
I'd make a motion to approve for a term of three years and a rate of 3.5%.
We have a motion by Greg Schultz to approve with the rate of three years and 3.5% interest on that also. Second to the motion?
Second.
Second by Kevin Rainey. Any further discussion there? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved also with those interest rates. The next one is Resolution 71-14, to adopt assessments for repair retaining wall on 304 LeMond Road. What is the council's wishes here?
I'd make a motion to approve at five years for 3.5%.
We have a motion by Greg to approve this at five years with a 3.5% interest rate. Do we have a second to that?
Second.
I got all kinds of interest here. Second by Nate Dodson. All those, any further discussion there? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved also. Thank you all for coming for this. It's another step closer to getting everything fixed. Next item on the agenda is a financial report, and we'll go to Greg with that.
Okay. Summary of the financial report. Checks issued over $20,000 are $117,014 to the Southeast Service Cooperative, which is the October health insurance premium, $167,228 to Borneke Construction for the Northwest Industrial Park Pond, and that is a reissue of a check that was made in error, $122,391 to McQueen Equipment for a 2014 snowgo, $22,246 to Mailer Roofing to re-roof the wastewater treatment plant buildings, $23,337 to Mansfield Oil Company for fuel purchases, $154,878 to the Oatana Fire Relief Association, and that is a pass-through of the fire state aid, $20,412 to Oatana Flooring for the balance of library carpet replacement, $25,735 to PAP Companies for fire department security upgrades. Other expenditures of $243,880 for total expenditures presented for approval of $897,124.98.
Thank you, Greg. You've heard the financial report. What is the council's wishes?
Motion to pay the bills.
A motion by Kevin Rainey to pay the bills. Do we have a second to that?
Second.
Second by Nate Dodson. Any further discussion there?
Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved also. Moving on to the consent agenda items, which are license permit requests, council meeting meetings, department reports, et cetera, all grouped into one motion, and what is the council's wishes on this?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Bill Thompson to approve. Do we have a second to that?
Second.
I'll go with Brent on this one. Second by Brent Svenby. Any further discussion on the consent agenda items? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved also. Moving on to action item, we have 3.2.1, 2014 labor agreement with Local 70 IOE, and we'll go to Chris.
Thank you, Les. Staff has been in negotiations with the union for several months. After many meetings and a mediation session, a tentative agreement was reached, and I will just summarize the changes for council. We have an increase in base wage effective January 1st of 2014 of 2%. You will recall, previous wage adjustment for 2013 was 1% on January 1st and 1/2% on July 1st. Health insurance, employer contributions will increase. Single coverage contribution will be increased by $8.54 a month, and the contribution for family coverage will increase by $23.75 per month. Employees hired July 1st, 2014 or after will be able to participate in the paid time off program, and all other Local 70 employees will have an option to convert to PTO one time a year. We've defined the recall period in the event of a layoff to be 12 months. Previously, this was not well-defined. And then the sick leave will be paid out at 50% for employees who separate from employment in good standing and who, on date of separation, either meet all the requirements to retire or have 10 or more years of continuous service with the city, and that sick leave shall be paid into the healthcare savings plan in accordance with our agreement. Employees who terminate due to involuntary termination or who do not meet the criteria shall not be paid and forfeit all rights to accumulated and unused sick leave. The expense for the wages will be $77,787. During fiscal year 2014, the insurance expense will be $77,58. Funding will be achieved through inappropriation in the budget for contingencies. Staff would recommend approval of the contract.
Thank you, Chris. And questions from the council? What is the council's wishes?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Kevin Rainey to approve. Do we have a second to that?
Second.
Second by Bill Thompson. Any further discussion on this? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved, and thank you, Chris, for getting this done. Next item on the agenda is 3.2.2, which is a non-union wage adjustment. We'll go back to Chris.
Thank you. Based on the wage adjustments reached with the IOE union, I'm recommending the same wage adjustment for our non-union employees to maintain consistency and fairness. The budget impact will be an expense of $85,992 during fiscal year 2014, and this will come through, funding through inappropriation in the budget from contingencies, and staff would recommend approval.
Thank you. Questions from the council? What is the council's wishes?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Greg and Nate to approve. Do we have a second to that?
Second.
Second by Brent Svenby. Any further discussion there? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? These have been approved also. Moving on to board and committee recommendations, 3.31, the preliminary plat of star addition, and there we'll go to Troy.
This is a preliminary plat, seven-star addition by Brad Spitzak, representing North Cedar Properties. The property would be located south of School Street and east of Bixby Road, right in between the railroad tracks. Currently, there's an existing house on the property, and the rest of the property is vacant. There is also a rezoning with this request, too, that'll come up later in the agenda, to rezone the property from B2 Community Business District and R1 Single Family to R6 High Density Residential. The plan is to construct a 24-unit apartment building on one of the lots this fall, with plans to construct another 24-unit apartment building at a later date. So this plat is really to set up a couple of lots to do that, right off of School Street, with future plans of potentially developing property further to the south. The entire property is a little over 28 acres. There would be three outlots platted as part of this as well. The remaining vacant property on the east side of the creek, the west side of the creek, and then there is a small outlot on the east side of the railroad tracks that would be platted as well. The property would have a storm pond to address the storm water generated from the apartment building, and that would be maintained with a retention pond on-site, and that would be done privately. There was a public hearing at the planning commission. There were a number of neighbors there, many of which I think are here at this meeting as well. The issues that were brought up were the type of apartments that were being proposed. Storm water was a big issue. Traffic along School Street, and the proximity of the apartments to the railroad tracks. to the railroad tracks. The type of apartments are being proposed are market rate apartments. There's no government program, tax credit program, subsidized housing, low-income housing proposed for these. These are market rate apartments. Storm water was discussed pretty extensively on this project. The applicant would have to address the storm water being generated from the apartments and they are proposing to do that with a storm pond onsite. The other issue that was brought up at the planning commission is more of an area-wide storm water issue with properties on the west side of Bixby Road. So currently, there's properties on that side in a ditch system where water comes across the culvert under Bixby Road and the railroad tracks and passes through the property in question here to get to Isaac Walton Creek. And some of the issues that were brought up were the maintaining of that culvert and the pathway from that culvert to the creek. When that is not maintained, water does back up in the culvert and to the properties on the west side, yeah, the west side of Bixby Road and into properties and I know that there's been some water damage to some of the homes there. So the planning commission did recommend approval of the preliminary plat. There was a number of conditions added on there and again, since the meeting, staff has met on this and I think an additional condition that we would want the council to place on this is that 30-foot easement, utility storm water easement be platted through the property for this drainage way from the culvert to the creek is maintained and then a condition that the property owner maintain that drainage way so that that water can continue through that easement into the creek. And so, planning commission did recommend approval. Staff would recommend approval as recommended by planning commission with the fact that a 30-foot utility storm water easement is platted on the property and that that easement is maintained for drainage to pass through that easement to the creek.
Thank you Troy. Has the property owner accepted that as a stipulation?
We did talk to the property owner today. He's aware of our recommendation to do that.
And he's willing to accept that?
I think he's looking to develop the property and if that's what's needed to get the approval then I think he's willing to do that.
Okay. Now, this is not a public hearing. Normally, we would not address any public comments but at this point, I know there's some here that would like to speak on this and if you would, please come up and sign in. We would allow that for this one.
I sent an email earlier.
Okay.
In regards to Ron and Wyon Prieb, they contacted me. Back in 2007, their property flooded, as you're aware, I think. And I was on the council back then. And, you know, their purpose is not to prevent development of that area.
Okay.
But they're concerned about the water because they get water from professional building parking lot and I have pictures here that Wyon and Ron have provided that shows some of the flooding and what can happen of the water coming from the professional building and what happens when it backs up through the culvert. So I guess, you know, as a step in the right direction is to require that property owner to clean that easement out, making sure that that flows. I don't know if there's other areas that still need to be cleaned out from the culvert maybe to that easement. I don't know if that's something that needs to be decided between the county and the city. Is there some responsibility there or is this going to take care of the whole thing?
Well, I don't know that that fixes the problem. I think that definitely allows the water to drain and go through there if it is maintained. It is probably some more ongoing discussions of storm water in that area will probably have to continue.
I think one of the things we need to realize though is that crossing underneath the railroad tracks there would involve the railroad too if there's any.
Well, you know, there is a culvert there already.
Yes.
And, you know, the other question is, is there anything that we can do with the water coming from the professional building? I know that's been a source of water in that area causing the flooding.
Well, we certainly, and again, I think the discussions about storm water in that area will continue and it's probably some discussions with the owners of that property on how to help mitigate some of the flooding issues that we have there. Those will have to be ongoing discussions we'll have to have and take a look at it more of an area-wide basis to see how we might be able to mitigate some of those, the storm water issues.
Question about enforcement, if we attach a condition with, require maintenance of that culvert, is our enforcement mechanism then simply if they don't comply, we go in do it and assess the property for the maintenance if it comes to that?
Yes. So, we would have access through that drainage easement. If they don't maintain the property, we would be able to go in and do it and assess the property for the cost.
I guess my concern would be is that if it is not maintained and the property is flooded and the basement is wiped out again like it was in 2007, now the recourse is is that do they have to go back to the property owner that didn't do the job?
And that becomes a...
Civil.
Civil. And Mark would have to help me here a little bit but I believe it's a nuisance complaint. Private nuisance.
Yes.
Okay.
Ron, Wyon, anything you want to add to that? We'd have you come up and...
I live in Owatonna. I'm homeowner on the west side that has a concern with it. If you guys had lived through it and it was caused because the water couldn't flow through and our sump pump failed, so we ended up gutting our entire basement. Pretty substantial cost to us and our insurance company. So I guess, you know, I want to see, like Bill said, we have no problem at all with them developing but I want to make sure that from where it goes through the culvert and goes under Bixby Road and gets to the Isaac Walton, that somebody has to be responsible for that and if it's not cleaned out and we get water and we get flooded, then to me, the city and the homeowner has responsibility to us. So I want to make sure that we're covered from the end that, because we already get enough of it off of the professional building parking lot. And I'm not sure why that water, why they're not made to have that water going out to Hillcrest in front of their building into the storm sewer there instead of coming down into our backyard. And if you look at the pictures that we gave to Bill, I mean, we're not talking about just a little stream. You could literally take a raft and raft down through where the water comes. So I want to make sure of that and then the other issue, you know, is the ditch gives, you know, when it rains and stuff, all the water from the south end comes down on that ditch on that east side, on the east side. And that contributes to plugging things up and my understanding, and I could be wrong but if I understood it correctly, because it has the curb and gutter and it's in the city limits, the city is responsible for making sure that ditch is cleaned out. And that whole ditch along there has so many weeds and branches and, I mean, I don't know that anybody's ever been down there and cleaned it out except in 2007 when we were at the meeting with the commissioners and, Chris, I think you were there possibly with Jeff Johnson. And that's when the city and county had to share the cost. So, you know, keeping that cleaned out is very important to us on that. So we need support from you guys to make sure that's enforced and that somebody is held responsible for it, not just the easement. I appreciate the easement. Got to go one step further in making sure that somebody's responsible.
I think what you're looking for is something that's upstream a little further if there's a remedy to that.
Well, and that would be part of it because it all, you know, when, and I'm betting all of you have seen that ditch when it rains and you've seen how it flows and so we're getting a lot of stuff coming down there that can plug it up but, you know, and if that all gets plugged up then the water, if it can't get through and get over to the Isaac Walton, then we not only have all this water from the professional building coming in our backyard, but now we have it backing up into our backyard because it can't get through. So it has to be cleaned out, the whole ditch has to be cleaned out and then that's got to be maintained, that easement and waterway over to the creek, so.
The unfortunate part about this part is a separate issue that we can deal with. We need to deal with this and get that working, that part. Now, what we also need to look at is what happens on the other side of 218. So we need to look...
And I know, right, and I know that 218 and...
Yeah. So I think we need to look at both separate but...
I just don't want, you know, you're into the middle of doing all this and then somebody says, "Oh, well, you know, we can't do that now because we've already started this and this is where it's at." It's got to be in the plan for that side of the road before the construction is done and started and, you know, and looked at.
The problem with this is this could be done right, everything done right here and you still have a problem. And it's not caused by this. So we need to look at both sides of the road and deal with both sides. With that, we do have a recommendation to approve as presented with that easement. Greg?
Kyle, is that ditch and culvert a city or a county?
It's county.
So ultimately, the county is job to clean it out.
I was told today that because there's an agreement in place, because it's in the city limits and there's curb and gutter, that even though it's a county road, that, so you might want to check with the county, but I was told that the city's actually responsible for that.
They say that a lot.
So, just so you know, I mean, I was told that today.
And I think the point is, the county says that and we say that they're responsible but, you know, there's nobody doing anything.
And aside from that, we are trying to work out a maintenance agreement with the county. We've been working on that for quite some time.
So, we will continue with that. With this, what is the council's wishes?
I'm Rhonda Fisher. I live across the street. I don't have an issue with them doing this project. I just have some concerns. I don't want it to end up like the one next door to me. And also, my question is on the water supply. We had two water mains break within a short period of time, certain sections of School Street. Is this going to feed those apartment buildings? The water supply main, our main water supply.
That would have to be answered by Troy, I think, wouldn't it?
Yeah, the utilities would come from the line in School Street.
Yeah, because it's, I mean, last spring, you know, I don't know how many millions of gallons of water were poured out while we waited over the weekend to get it fixed, you know, but they did get it fixed and they were decent enough to come and let us know that they were shutting it off. But if you're going to force, have that much more water running through it and they said it was in bad shape then and it's broke a couple times, just in that little stretch there between the tracks, you know, just something to mention or concern for me. I don't want to be out of the water, you know.
The utilities does have that section on their repair list. I can't say when they have it in their plan but they do have it on their, in their work plan. I don't know what year, but they have recognized that that water main is in need of replacement.
Dan Nordman, I live on Bixby Road also. One of the concerns I had is you're putting a high-density apartment complex in an area right by railroad tracks that's landlocked. You have one entrance in over the railroad tracks or you have the other one under the railroad tracks. And if something were to happen in that area, how would you get a high-density of 48 units out of the area safely? Would be the one question I had is just a safety issue and also I agree with the water. If you're putting more water into an area, even with the holding pond, it eventually flows into Isaac Walton which is draining that whole part of town. So any more runoff that you're adding, even if it's going through a storm pond and then into Isaac Walton, still has the potential to add more backup.
Could I have you sign in, Dan? I guess that's a question to answer, Troy, is it...
Well, the storm water portion of it, is they're going to be holding the water onsite for the imperious surface that they're creating and letting it out into creek at the same rate it does today. As far as the railroad tracks, it does, you know, School Street does go all the way through, has an underpass under the railroad tracks to the east and there are railroad tracks that block Bixby Road, the access to Bixby Road. So there's two access points out. If there was circumstances that for some reason they were both blocked off and the underpass was not accessible, you know, there could be a route that takes you on the old Main Street, kind of behind the Fishers there and through the Gandy property, access all through that way, so.
There is a second access.
Well, there's probably a third access on the way out of there.
Okay, Les.
Speaking of safety with the tracks there, with that much increased traffic capacity there, would there come a point where we would require or talk to the railroad about actually putting stop arms there? That track there is notorious for people not stopping. I mean, people, there's a stop sign there. Half the time, I see people, they don't bother stopping. Are we going to increase the traffic there pretty substantially, I imagine, once this is built and inhabited? What would, how would we go about having the railroad look at having to put up stop arms or something there?
Yeah, I don't know what the trigger points are for arm bars or at a crossing. I guess we could have that discussion with the railroad to find out what that would be.
I would guess that, you're talking about that, any growth east of that track where you live in that area, any growth would almost require something very soon in the future to happen because it's not going to be just one spot. It's going to be an area that will be growing.
Right.
And so we need to address that with the railroad at some point soon.
And I think we should at least get some information about that as this proceeds so we have an idea of what will happen there.
Okay. Getting back to our original 3.3.1, what is the council's wishes?
Les, I got a question.
Oh.
Troy, in our packet, we have one page that's called the official plat. Is that their final plat they're proposing at some point in the future or...
It's the draft, yeah. So there will be a preliminary and final plat that will come. So this is the preliminary plat and then you'll have, come before you, the final plat.
So, in looking at their future plans, their phase two of the project, that building would be over that lot line and stuff? Will they have to do some type of replat in the future then?
Yeah, and that's part of the discussions that are happening right now is the preliminary plat may only have one lot. That lot on the corner is Torn's property and so there's a process they're going to have to go through that in order to subdivide it. So although this is what's shown on the preliminary plat, the final plat may be just a one-lot plat for this initial apartment building and the rest will be divided into outlots.
Plus, we would have the easement for the drainage?
Correct.
Added to it?
Correct.
Okay. Before I go into any other questions? Seeing none, what is the council's wishes on this motion?
I'd make a motion we approve. I just hope that you've done a good job at identifying all the issues with the area and that they can all be addressed and that...
We have a motion by Nate with the... We have a motion by Nate with the additional easement, et cetera, and the recommendations. Do we have a second to that?
Second.
Second, by Greg Schultz. Any further discussion on this? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, this has been approved, and there will be a final plat within...
Probably the next council meeting.
Next council meeting, okay, very good. Now, moving on to 3.3.2, conditional use number C-1370 for Chart Industries, and we go back to Troy again.
Chart Industries is proposing to install a 13,000-gallon tank to be used for internal processes, and the ordinance does require that any tanks over 12,000 gallons are permitted with a conditional use permit. The tank would be 38 feet tall, approximately nine and a half feet in diameter, and just for reference, the building height is 42 feet tall, so it would just be slightly under the, the top of the building there. It would be on the west side of the building, 400 feet from the west property line, 15 feet from the wall of the building, which meets the requirements of the fire code. There would also be a six-foot-tall chain-link fence around it, which also meets the minimum requirements for the fire marshal. Currently, they're using the transport trailer for their supply, and this would replace that as a permanent tank on site. They did have a public hearing at Planning Commission, there was no one objecting to the request, and therefore, Planning Commission did recommend approval.
Thank you, Troy. Questions from the council?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Greg Schultz to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Kevin Rainey, any further discussion here? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, this has been approved. Moving on to ordinances, 3.4.1, second reading of proposed ordinance for Lee Holding Properties, and back to Troy.
Okay, this is, we had the first reading at the, at the last city council meeting. This is a request for Lee Holding's group that purchased the property at 175 18th Street Southwest. I call it the old Stuart Thompson Building. It was previously a cabinet shop and thus was in an IP industrial park district. They are requesting it to be rezoned to a B2 community business district with the intent of having a commercial use in that building, and are in the process of doing some renovations to the building.
Thank you, Troy. Any questions from the council?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Kevin Rainey to approve, do we have a second to that?
Second.
Second by Brent Svenby, any further discussion? Seeing none, with this being an ordinance, I ask for roll call.
Councilmember Rainey.
Aye.
Svenby.
Aye.
Dotson.
Aye.
Thompson.
Aye.
Schultz.
Aye.
Burbank.
Aye.
Abraham.
Aye.
Of all seven ayes.
This has been approved also. Moving on to 3.4.2, second reading of proposed ordinance, 9/14 for franchise agreement for Jaguar Communications, and this will go to Chris.
Thank you, excuse me, thank you, Les. As you know, the city posted the intent to franchise in July, an application was received from Jaguar Communications in September. Public hearing was held on September 16th to consider Jaguar's legal, financial, and technical qualifications to operate a cable franchise in Owatonna. Council approved Jaguar's application by resolution on October 3rd, finding the application substantially complies with the application requirements. Council also determined Jaguar is legally, technically, and financially qualified to receive a franchise from the city. I will highlight some of the general terms of the franchise agreement. It is a 50-page document. In general, the franchise, franchise terms provide a construction of a fiber-to-the-home system. The system will offer cable service in the Owatonna North portion of the city by December 31st, 2015. Further extend the system and the services to identified segments of the city once 48% or more dwellings pass by the, subscribe to the service and extend to any area of the city not served by another franchised operator, and extend to any other area of the city at its discretion. The term is 15 years, payment of a franchise fee of 5% of gross revenues as defined, dedicate at least two PEG access channels for the city's use for community program, programming, and a third PEG channel provided within six months after a written request by the city. Pay 50% of the $85,000 PEG fee needed initially by the city for purchase of video programming equipment and facilities. Pay a fee of up to $1.25 per subscriber per month to fund future community programming needs at the city's request. Provide free cable services to half of the list of public institutions. Require cable customer service standards and a local service office in the city of Owatonna. City will be responsible for cable casting of programming on the public access channel effective December 31, 2015. There will be a construction of a two-way activated connection from City Hall to allow the upstream transmission of video programming. There will be a filing of an annual report with the city council regarding the cable system, including summary of complaints received, results of any cable system performance test, and update of as-built maps. Furnish an irrevocable standby letter of credit or a performance bond in the amount of $25,000. $1.5 million of liability insurance, $1.5 million of bodily injury or death, $1.5 million for property damage, and a $5 million umbrella policy. Budget impact is as follows: a receipt of 5% of gross revenues from Jaguar, receipt of half of the PEG fee of $42,500, the option of collecting the $1.125 per month, and the assumption of costs in 2016 for administering the public access channel. Staff would recommend approval of the franchise.
Thank you. Questions from the council?
Question, I guess I would have, is I was contacted today by a representative of Charter. One, I guess I didn't appreciate the contact at the last minute, challenging, you know, our second reading tonight and the approval of that second reading. My guess is everybody on the council's been contacted in the same regard. I would just like to ask Mark as council as to, you know, do we have any risk here? What, you know, what's our position of that?
The, Bob Voss, our cable counsel, responded to the letter that you were copied on to Jane Bremer of the Charter Company, and set out the city's position that it's, the city's position that the existing franchise, it no longer exists, and that, the way I kind of think of it is almost as a, of a holdover tenant who doesn't continue to enjoy the rights under a lease. So they continue to provide service, but they're not operating under the franchise that they, that they had, and that's borne out for the reasons stated in Mr. Voss's letter that I think you've all received a copy of.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions from the council?
I agree with Bill. I also got a phone call today, and, you know, between that and receiving the letter on a Monday afternoon, they've had two weeks to respond, and this is the second time that we've gotten a letter very late, leading up to a council meeting, and maybe they're late in, in doing their homework, but I would certainly expect that we would have gotten these letters way prior to the Monday afternoon, leading into a city council meeting.
Thank you. Any other comments? What is the council's wishes?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Kevin Rainey to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Dave Burbank, any further discussion? Seeing none, this also being an ordinance, ask for roll call.
Councilmember Rainey.
Aye.
Svenby.
Aye.
Dotson.
Aye.
Thompson.
Aye.
Schultz.
Aye.
Burbank.
Aye.
Abraham.
Aye.
All seven ayes.
This has been approved also. Moving on to 3.4.3, first reading of proposed ordinance, Z-328 for North Star Properties at, and Seventh Star Properties, and we'll go to Troy with that.
Okay, this is the zoning request made by North Cedar Properties relative to the Seventh Star plat that previously was approved. It's a rezoned property from B2 Community Business District and R1 Single Family to an R6 High Density Residential District. Again, for just those lots for the apartment buildings at this point, the rest will be left in an R1 Single Family zone.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Nate to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Kevin Rainey, any further discussion there? Seeing none, and again, this being an ordinance, ask for roll call.
Councilmember Rainey.
Aye.
Svenby.
Aye.
Dotson.
Aye.
Thompson.
Aye.
Schultz.
Aye.
Burbank.
Aye.
Abraham.
Aye.
All seven ayes.
Thank you. Moving on down to resolutions, Resolution 65-14, summary ordinance, 615 Jaguar, we did that, didn't we? No, it's resolution now. We have to do that now.
Right.
And that we go to Chris.
Thank you, Les. As you know, we publish all, all ordinances, and we are allowed to publish just a summary if the ordinance itself is very lengthy, as this one is, 50 double-sided pages. So staff would recommend approval of this resolution, allowing for the summary publication of the ordinance. And the full ordinance is available on our website and in the office if someone wants a, a hard copy as well. Staff would recommend approval.
Thank you, Chris. Again, what is the council's wishes here?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Bill Thompson to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Brent Svenby, any further discussion here? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, this has been approved also. Thank you. Now we move on to 3.53, Resolution 68-14, payment for construction and design of three-quarter access to Brady Boulevard and Hoffman Drive, and this will go to Kyle.
Good evening. At the city's request, we performed a traffic study looking at constructing a three-quarter access to Brady Boulevard in conjunction with the turnback reconstruction of Old Highway 14 from State Avenue to the I-35 Bridge. And as part of that, MINDOT is asking that we pass a resolution agreeing to pay for the design cost of $7,821.40 and an estimated construction cost of $32,000. In addition to those costs, we have already paid, or will be paying shortly, $6,500 for the traffic study that was required by Steel County. So we would be looking to reimburse ourselves for those costs with state aid funds. We can expend our state aid money on trunk highways and county roads, so we would recommend approval.
Thank you, Kyle. Questions from the council? Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Greg Schultz to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Bill Thompson, any further discussion there? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, this has been approved. We now move on to Resolution 7214, set date for public hearing for issue of conduit revenue bonds for refinancing, and this will go to Chris.
Thank you, Les. City has received a request from Acumen, a nonprofit company, to utilize the city of Owatonna's bank-qualified status to refinance bonds issued to the Acumen Countryside project. Countryside is formerly known as Brooks, it is a 61 senior housing, 61-unit senior housing facility located at 650 Eldorado Street. The city has the authority to issue conduit financing under Chapter 462(c) of the statute. The city is not responsible for the payment of the bonds, nor is it subject to any liability from these bonds. The bonds will not constitute a debt of the city nor affect the city's credit rating. The city has an approved policy when considering such requests. The policy provides for a non-refundable fee of $1,000 to cover out-of-pocket expenses and a one-time administrative fee in the amount of 0.5% of the principal, principal amount of the application issued by the city. Budget impact is the application fee of $1,000 and the half a percent administrative fee of, which would result in a $33,000 fee. Our expenses would be the cost of publication and any legal fees for recording documents, estimated around $300. Since the city has no plans at this time to additional, to issue additional debt, and the request meets the requirements under the city's conduit financing policy, staff would recommend approval. I believe there is a representative here from Acumen if council has any other further questions.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? Seeing none, no...
Motion, motion to approve.
Motion by Bill Thompson to approve, do we have a second to that?
Second.
Second by Kevin Rainey, any further discussion now? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, this has been approved. Good luck with it. Moving down to the next item, which would be miscellaneous, 3.61, which is order relating to building at 312 North Cedar Street. This will go to Mike.
Good evening, this is a request for council action on a hazard abatement order that I wrote on the property at 312 Cedar Avenue. This is under the Minnesota State Fire Code, Section 110, for unsafe buildings. The background of this site that's there, on 6/2, 2014, we inspected the property, we found some hazards related to the structural integrity of the walls of the building. We requested the property owners to submit a, a plan and have the property evaluated by a structural engineer, which they did. On 7/11, we issued an inspection order requiring them to evacuate the building because of the findings that we had from the structural engineer. We issued a new order, 9/2514, and this was to abate the hazards by October 14th, or October 10th, 2014, for that property. Still the same thing, the property owners were non-compliant with that. On 10/14, we had, and property was inspected again, the hazards had not been abated at that time. Our recommendation is to proceed with legal action to have these hazards abated on this property. There's no budget impact with this. We have been working with the property owners, Ruth and Jerry Williams, they have been complied with our orders as far as the evacuation order. They have not abated the hazards at that property, so this is a council request to move forward with legal proceedings with the city attorney.
Thank you. Any questions from the council?
What happens if they do not fix the property or...
Ultimately, the city would have the power to go in and abate the nuisance, and then the cost of it would be an assessment against the property. That's one of the city's remedies.
Do we have any idea on the projected cost of the repair?
The property owners are here, they can answer. Please go to the microphone, please.
My name is Ruth Williams, I'm, I'm the owner of Completely Kids and Maternity. It's 312 North Cedar. And if you have ever tried to get a builder during the busy season, and especially a specialized builder, as, as is needed for this problem, we have been trying, we have contacted ROCON, which after several weeks of contacting Bob, he said that there is no way he can fit anything into his schedule. We have contacted Mike from, well, first we...
Mike Healy.
Mike Healy from Healy Construction, and also Rick Thomas, from Rick's Restorations, Restoration Services, both of them out of Faribault, and we've been in contact with them a number of times. Of course, their schedule was filled, and they understand the urgency of it, and just today, finally, we did get a contract and proposal. Restoration Services and Healy Construction Incorporated are planning on teaming up for this project for the emergency. So they will be doing the permanent repairs in the spring. And of course, they haven't been able to come with, come up with a cost at this time because they need further exploration. And also Rick has, Rick Thomas has obtained another engineer since we were not quite satisfied with the reports of the initial one. And so he has retained the services of another engineer that he has worked in, with in the past to help with that project. And the time of the, as time is the essence, as such, will be performed as soon as possible and no later than November fifteenth, two thousand fourteen.
Okay. I guess Mike, question is, would that be, you know, if we continue to move forward, is that satisfactory that they are progressing with this?
What we needed for them to comply with the emergency abatement order was to submit a plan from a structural engineer or an architect. And that plan was to be submitted to our building official, Ken Beck. And then they had to have a timeline and the plan had to include what the abatement process would be to eliminate the hazards for that structure. To date, as I'm aware of, we have not received any plan from a structural engineer discussing how they would want to abate that, those issues that are there. My recommendation would be to proceed with the legal proceedings with the understanding, Ruth and Jerry Williams have been very good to work with, they run a good business. But we need to proceed forward because we have a responsibility here to abate the hazards because it is an unsafe building. If they do submit that plan, as we've informed them to our building official that outlines what the plan is, a recommendation from the structural engineer to us, we could stop the proceeding at any time that's there. But right now, we don't have that, anything that would make them come into compliance.
I, I can appreciate the fact that it's difficult finding contractors to do work when they've got their schedule already filled for the year. But I think if we, again, as you said, if we move forward and they bring that, we can stop it. Is that, you accept that?
Guess we'll have to. I mean, you know, how long did it take you guys to get this building worked on? Three years?
I'm not sure how long it took, but.
Pretty close to get a contractor to do it. I mean, you know.
I don't think there were structural, there wasn't bowling and that type of thing in this building.
There was no.
Utilities wasn't structural? How long did that take?
No, but it was an imperative that we couldn't use it while it was being remodeled.
We, we also have, as they requested, we installed a six-foot fence because people were not complying with the orange fencing from the city. And they were still going into alleys. And so we have complied with the fence requirements as well.
As Mike has said, you've been very good to work with. And I think if we can continue to do that, we do need to move forward with it. But I'm sure that we will be very happy to stop it, as you said, once you get the infrastructure.
That if, if you go through and have your plan from your structural engineer, you can provide that to the building official, let us know and we can look at it from there and we can stop the proceeding.
Okay. Rick Thomas did have a meeting yesterday with an engineer of his trust that he has worked with in the past. And so we'll proceed from there, but that's.
Okay. Thank you. Nate?
So in your estimation, if we were to table this until our next meeting, are you confident that you would have all the necessary information that would not require?
Yeah.
Fifteen?
Next meeting is November third. When is the next meeting?
November third.
Okay. We should have that information.
If we do not have, have action tonight, does the liability on this change from them to us in regards to if that building goes down?
I could tell you that I wrote emergency abatement orders and there was a deadline. They were non-compliant. If we do not take action at that point, I would feel that we have some responsibility. I would refer that answer to our city attorney.
Without getting into the immunity issues, I think that the plan that the chief has outlined is a reasonable one, directing me to proceed with a proceeding under the hazardous building statute, just by the terms of the statute itself, gives them twenty days within which to answer. So that's going to take you up. So I think that it might be somewhat of a belt and suspenders approach, but I think it's probably wise to initiate the proceeding so that the clock starts running so that if these people who have, who have been cooperative, as Mike has said, can't conceivably get it done, that at least you would be, the city would be in a position to go in and abate the nuisance. So it'd be my recommendation that the council proceed.
Would it make sense for us to authorize the legal proceedings, but not until a certain date, which would give them the time to comply?
There's already.
The clock at all, or does that not really give us any?
The, the order that we've drafted here is, is an order from the council and it's in the nature of a summons complaint. By its terms, it extends the time, an additional twenty days from tonight. And if within that twenty days, they're, they're showing substantial progress and getting something done, the city's not going to step up and try to take over the project. It's just that I was encouraged by the fire chief to keep moving on this because of the fact that I think it was in, in June when this process started.
So if we proceed as planned tonight, they come in with something next meeting, they can, we can stop it?
Absolutely. I mean, that's what we want and I'm pleased that you were able to visit with a contractor to assist you with it. If we could please get a copy of that letter or proposal that you have to when we're done here today, that would be good. Thank you so much.
Thank you. With that being said, what is the council's wishes?
Well, I will reluctantly make the motion. Obviously, I don't think anybody probably wants to see this proceed, but I hope this can get.
I will accept that motion by Nate to proceed. Do we have a second to that?
I'll second it.
Second by Bill Thompson. Any further discussion there? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, this will proceed and if they come back and have action started, we can stop it next council meeting. Okay. Thank you. With that, we'll move on to the next item, which is public comments. And if anyone would like to speak on any issue that is not on the agenda, please come forward and sign in. We allow you two minutes.
My name is Tim Visna. I live at twelve thirteen South Elm. I know a lot of you by face and or by name. I've lived in town for many, many years. Before I start, I just want to say, public service is a hard service. And whether you're a police officer, a fire chief, or what you guys do, I don't think you get thanked enough. And now that I'm here, I want to say thank you for what you do. Now to why I'm here. I understand, I'm David, you guys are Gliot. And I'm going to throw my stone, not literally, but I'm throwing it out there to let you know. A little bit ago, I had a issue with my sewer in the basement. So I called plumber, he comes out, does the snake thing. He goes, well, it's out there, but I don't know what it is. He goes, I don't have the equipment to tell you. So you're going to have to get another plumber, get another plumber. He comes in with the camera, goes out, yeah, you're about a hundred and blah blah sixty-some feet out there and looks like broken tile. I go, oh, okay. Now, I might, I'm not the smartest Bob sometimes, right? So I go, okay. He goes, you're going to have to get that other plumber back because they're going to have to go into the street. I go, okay. So from, what's that mean? He goes, well, you're going to have to pay from the main in the street to your house. Anywhere in there, you pay. Curve to the house? No, no. Main to the house. I go, oh. So I call the other plumber back. I go, so how much is that going to run? He goes, well, I can't tell you. He goes, that's the catch-twenty-two here. I have to actually dig up the street and then fix your tile and then put it all back and then I can give you a bill. And I'm like, so let's say the city says, Mr. Visna, you got to shingle your house. Can I get an estimate? No, you just get somebody to shingle it and then you just pay their bill. That's basically what is going, you know, how I'm looking at it anyway. So I'm going, I'm not going to do this. So I, well, I didn't, not going to do this. I'm looking at other options. So I get a third plumber in there. He comes in, he does the job. He goes, no, it's in the street. How much do we owe you? And honestly, he says, you don't owe me anything. He says, you're going to be paying enough. So I call the other company back, they start digging up my street. Now, I have a copy of my bill. I don't know if you guys want to see it or not. But it's a couple hundred dollars of ten thousand dollars. Ten thousand dollars. Now, I have to go get a loan for that. I lived here, paid taxes at my place for seventeen years, right? And I understand that Oatana, which has been really good, I mean, businesses provide jobs, there's a lot of people in Oatana that can afford ten thousand dollars. But there's a lot of people in Oatana that don't have ten thousand dollars in the cookie jar for something that they didn't do. I did nothing wrong. I just have a bill for ten thousand dollars. Now, I mean, get me if I'm wrong here. Now, if that was on property taxes, I would have some relief, right? Or some payments, something like that, correct? Or if it was on my utilities in the winter, they would work with you a little bit. There's no work in here because it's not, it's the ordinance from the city, but I have to pay the plumber, the plumbing company, right? So there's nothing I, I can work with. So I understand that there's nothing that can happen for me. I have to deal with this. I have to pay ten thousand dollars. But let's say down the road, you get somebody that's on a fixed income and they didn't even break into the curb because I'd have to pay for that too. But you get somebody on a fixed income and they can't afford that, what do they do?
One of, one of the things, Tim, that we are working on, and I know the, the utilities are working on this at this very moment, that we're trying to set up a program, as many other communities have, that will go from the street to the walls of the basement or the house. And there would be like an insurance policy or some, some sort that would cover everything from your wall to the.
Yeah. And that's basically all I'm asking is if we can look at it and say, you know, maybe there's something we can do where you could add that to, let's say, your property taxes over ten years. I don't know. Or you can say, here's the deal, you, you top out at three thousand and we'll take the rest from there. But ten thousand, fourteen thousand, fifteen thousand dollars with no help.
But what we're looking at is that if we, you know, is it like a dollar or two dollars a month?
Yeah, something like that.
That, that would be covering all of this?
Yep.
We can, you know, this is what we're looking for. And I've talked to Mark Fritz at the utilities and he is progressing with that. It just happened to you too soon, unfortunately.
And, and I'm, I'm glad of that. And so then I'm happy I came up here because I didn't know that.
Yep.
I didn't research it as much as I could. But, you know, Oatana's a great city, beautiful parks, you know, the school system's awesome. Hospital's awesome, fire and police department are awesome. This is wrong and you need to fix it.
And we're, we're trying to correct that. So.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Kyle's got a comment to that.
Yep.
In the, in, also in the past, I have seen where a property owner has come to the city and requested that the city pay for the costs and assess it to their, their property. Now, in your case, you would be still paying for the entire bill, but it would be a financing mechanism. So I think that's, it would be up to the council, of course, but in situations, we have done that in, I have seen that done in other cities where, you know, it's a substantial bill and they, it affects both our system and yours and they have put it on the taxes for five or 10 years.
If, if that's the case, I would ask you to contact Kyle and work out some details and if, if we can do that, I'm sure we would be happy to.
I appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else?
Les?
Kevin.
And I, Mr. Visna and myself, we've done this a fair amount. And I, I want, I want to look at this as a council sooner rather than later because I, I agree with what he's saying. If there isn't, if there is a better solution out there, you know, I don't want, I don't want to repeat this. If we can correct it, let's, let's, let's get after it.
That's one thing that Mark Fritz is working on right now. And I did ask him to try to get.
But this would be the city side.
Before winter. So it doesn't, nothing happens over the winter to someone. So I'll ask you to, Kyle?
We would have to develop our own program. There's what.
Okay. I guess what I'd do is I'd ask you to talk to Tim and see what can be done.
Okay. My name is Levona Sharats. My husband and I moved here about a year ago. And when we went into a restaurant, two women came and said, may we sit at your table? It was the Zamboni twins. And we felt so welcomed to this city because of them. And we went to their birthday party and our mayor was so wonderful. He gave a presentation with them and we came back saying, yes, this was right. We're having a great time in Oatana. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
My name is Barb Judd. I live on Springwood Place, which is adjacent to Menlo Springs Park. I have two points I want to make this evening about the upcoming archery deer hunt that's supposed to start on November first. My first point is I would like to see the city of Oatana have some kind of a task force that studies wildlife within the city, not only deer, but Canadian geese. Good, could be Pearl and Con, much like the deer management or advisory teams that the DNR is setting up for a study of wildlife within the state. This would be a committee that would garner input from the citizens of Oatana. They could send email, they could do questionnaires, whatever it is, so that everybody in the city had an opportunity to weigh in on wildlife management within the city. This is the third hunt in three years and is scheduled for fifteen hunters at five deer each, could be possibly seventy-five deer. It's going to run for six weeks. And my other point is, and I have, hopefully you can see some of my evidence so that you believe me. These are aerial photographs from various cities, Bemidji, Cook, some of them larger than others, Anoka. All of these are aerial photographs that have the outlined area that's going to be in the hunt so that you can go online and see where the hunters are going to be placed in the parks. Okay? I have not seen that. The two things that I have seen online are these two application forms that I have picked up from the city unless there's something on there since Saturday. And these are both varying information. One talks about private property and one doesn't. One specifies parks, one doesn't. I assume one was earlier than the other. In that case, they should have taken down the earlier one and left this one. But there's no posting. Here's open hunting areas in other cities with aerial maps. I would like to see the city council address or talk to the park and rec department. I would like to see an outline of schedule for hunting in the parks, maybe hours that they will be in the parks. Maybe they'll be Mondays in springs, maybe they'll be Tuesday in manthay, whatever it is. Maybe they'll be hunting in the morning between five and eight in the morning or in the evening. I just think it's a very safety concern to have the parks open and have people be using the parks and have hunters be in the park. I happen to be in the park on a daily basis, you know that. And I want to know if there's a hunter in the park when I'm in the park and I want to know where they are. Okay? I don't think that's an unreasonable request. Am I expected as a park patron to wear blaze orange when I visit the city parks? Most of these, most of these cities that have hunts are in nature reserves. I found that Oatana on this list, but there are only ten cities that are on this list. The rest are preserves. So I would like the city council to talk to the park and rec department. I would like the park and rec department to publish a schedule of the hunt, when the hunters are going to be in the various parks. The last two times we had hunts, it was run by the police department and, and they barricaded and they closed parks and they were very proactive about keeping people out of the parks. I've talked to various hunters who say that it's very common that the first shot does not kill the deer. The deer could be running out of the park, the deer could run into the road, the deer Would I call 911? Or are they going to field dress the deer in the park? Are they going to remove the park, the deer from the park? I guess I wouldn't really appreciate having children see deer running around with arrows sticking out of them. You know, hopefully, they've done a good job on, you know, the hunters, and we won't have that problem, but it could happen. So I guess my, I would really like to see two things. Either a task force that studies deer or wildlife management in the future, and some safety or some scheduling for the hunt. If you look at any of the other cities, they do have hours for the hunt, or they have certain days when they're in places. And especially Manthee Park and Middle Springs are huge playground areas.
I think you got two issues here-
Yeah, I do.
-that you're talking about.
Yeah.
One is wildlife management, which I think-
Yes, and that could be addressed in the future, but I just think it would be a great way to get input.
As far as the deer hunt, we had a brief discussion at our study session regarding that, and-
Well, you need to publicize it, you know, if we could publicize it in a way and invite public comment and just involve a lot of people.
They're working on a map to show where all the deer hunting is going to be done, when it's going to be done, all the different-
Well, they better do it pretty quickly because we're nine days away, right? Or 10 days? Yeah.
The report we got tonight was saying that it will be done, and-
Well, how will it be available to people? Online?
It'll be on the website.
It'll be online.
On the website. Do you know when?
They were finalizing the locations of the tree stands today, so.
Okay. And will the hunt area be cordoned off with orange tape, and will the signs say "Hunt in Progress" in the park?
They're making signs for every entrance of the parks where the hunt will be held, and-
But you're not closing the parks. They're going to be open to patrons, and the hunters are going to be there while the parks are open. And children will be at the playground.
I think that's all going to be in the-
They're not going to be hunting on the playground.
No, but I'd like to know where they're going to be hunting. That's the whole point of my-
And we will have that.
That will all be published on the-
They will be in the remote areas.
Yes.
But what does that, what does that mean?
You'll see exactly where they'll be.
They'll be on the maps showing where they'll be hunting. And, you know, just like the maps you were talking about in different cities, we're planning on doing the same thing.
Yeah, well, they better do it quickly because we're 10 days away or whatever. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, we will move on to council comment, and we will start with Kevin.
I have nothing tonight.
Brent?
Nothing tonight.
Nate?
I will expound on my comments about the railroad track coming off of School Street. There are a lot of people that run that stop sign, and we have been seeing quite a few more trains there. So please stop at the stop sign.
Thank you. Thank you. Bill?
Well, I guess there was a little article in the paper about leaves in the boulevard. I'd just like to send a reminder to keep the leaves out of the boulevard. It doesn't do our sewer system any good. We have a problem with that the way it is. Another, maybe a pet peeve of mine is seeing things nailed trees, the city trees, whether they're rummage sale signs or whatever, but occasionally I go around the city and see those things, and they're literally nailed with spikes, or there's signs on trees and stuff.
Or power poles.
Or power poles, that same thing. Just a reminder that that's not what should be done. It's not right. And a reminder that charter, we had Jaguar approved tonight, but charter, if you don't have your boxes, your TVs will not work on the 28th. So be aware, go out and get your boxes if need be. So with that, the end of my comments.
Thank you. Great.
I can't follow that nothing this season.
Just to remind parents and children to stay safe on Halloween.
Thank you. Tom?
Just a reminder, they had elections on the 4th coming up, and that moves our council meeting up on to Monday night instead of Tuesday night for the first meeting in November.
Thank you. Chris?
Nothing.
Well, we do have another study session on Tuesday, the 28th, so that would be for the council. And that would be at 6 o'clock at the Art Center that night. With that, Cheryl Entertainment motion.
Some of-
A motion to adjourned by Kevin. Do we have a second?
Second.
I'll take Nate's this time.
That's fine.
Second by Nate. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting adjourned. Thank you all for coming.